...for the last decade, so.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And it's gotta be some work putting together.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. And Secretary of Police, call roll.
Dennis Sabalski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is here. Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
James Berry.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
Gail Greger and John Itzhell are both excused.
Okay, thank you. And the commission would like to welcome James Berry as our newest commissioner, so welcome aboard.
Thank you all. Glad to be aboard.
And do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? I have no additions or subtractions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for Wednesday, January 18th.
Just a moment. Is the... The election of officers on here?
Still not here. Yeah, you still didn't put the election of officers. Okay. We'll just add that.
We'll add that, okay.
We'll do that after new business, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda with the addition of the election of officers for Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of our December 14th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the December 14th minutes as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Okay. Because Commissioner Berry was not at that meeting. But the motion does carry. And is there anyone here that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, you read one. We'll move to application 2460, the Ilmore Engineering Building Expansion. And Ms. Howell, your report.
Thank you, Chairman Sabalski. Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you is for a site plan for a building expansion to the Ilmore Engineering Facility that's located in the Plymouth Oaks Boulevard Industrial Park. The building, which consists of industrial use and office, is currently 46,000 square feet. The building addition would be an additional, almost 7,000 square feet of usable workspace for a total of 53,000 square feet. The site is on the industrial district where the current use and the continuation of the use is permitted by right. I'll briefly go over the elements in our site plan review letter. As I mentioned, the site is properly zoned. There's no special land uses or rezonings required for this project. In terms of the dimensional standards, the new building footprint will occupy the site of the former outdoor employee patio area, which will be relocated slightly to the east. So, the buildable site is completely within the buildable envelope of the parcel. And it meets all those dimensional requirements. Number three, in our review letter on page three, related to site features, as this is an outdoor kind of courtyard that will be used as the new building footprint, there are several trees that will be removed for the project. One of those trees is considered a heritage tree as it's 18 inches. And the applicant is proposing the cracked replacement at that one-to-one ratio. They are proposing six new deciduous trees near the new patio area to the east. We note elsewhere in our review that they're proposing some additional landscaping as part of that replacement that's along the east property line. And while this does satisfy the tree replacement requirements, it appears that those, that vegetation would be constructed across the property line. And so, we just need to make sure that there's either an easement or approval from the adjacent property owner. In terms of the impact on public services, number four, the township fire department and township engineer both have found no deficiencies and are recommending tentative and final site plan approval. Number five, vehicular access and circulation. There's no change to the vehicular access either to the site or throughout. The applicant did apply last year, or the year before, for a minor parking lot expansion that was done administratively. And that parking is sufficient for the site today, so there's no changes to the parking lot needed at this point. Similarly, there's no major changes to the pedestrian access. The patio on the east side of the building will be connected with an interior sidewalk. Again, on page five, we note just a couple items for the landscape plan where there's just some minor corrections needed with labeling. So, we recommend that that would just be done administratively. And then, we also mention again that those plantings on the east property line and the fence, that's proposed to screen that area. Details of that would need to be provided. On the bottom of page five, regarding parking and loading, the site requires 107 spaces based on its future build-out use, or future build-out. And even with that, the site is, has additional parking at 132 spaces when only 107 are required. So, the applicant notes that they anticipate 10 new employees with this building expansion, so the parking that they have is both sufficient in terms of meeting the code and the anticipated capacity of the facility. Number 10 on page six deals with the building architecture and design. Because this is kind of fitting into a courtyard-like space, there's not too much new facade that will be added. They are proposing split-faced CMU and a good deal of glazing on that south elevation. And then, lastly, they are adding one wall pack above a pedestrian door on that south elevation, and we just note that the photometric plan must show that revised lighting. So, our recommendation is noted on page seven of our review where we recommend tentative and final site plan approval this evening. Contingent that these three items are reviewed by the Administrative Review Committee. That would be the revised photometric plan, the revised landscape plan, including the rights to plant, the landscaping and fence on the adjacent property line. And if that fence is proposed, that a detail be provided not to exceed six feet in height. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the engineer, excuse me, the engineer is not with us this evening, but we do have a copy of his report. He also recommends tentative and final site plan approval, subject to some of his comments in the report. And as Ms. Howell has indicated, the applicants received a communication from the fire department. They have no issues, no deficiencies found with the plan. So, with that, the applicant is here. Anyone have a presentation, comments, take questions from us?
We're happy to answer any questions. We've got some of the city of engineering, their tech, and the more results.
Okay. Do you want to just come up and tell us a little bit about the expansion? What's causing the expansion? Is it increase in business, more employees, you know, that kind of issue? If you could come up here, there's a mic.
Hi. My name is Bill Dietz, and I'm the Director of Operations for Ilmore Engineering. The intended purpose of the expansion is to house operations for part of our racing engine business. So, we build all the Chevrolet racing engines for the IndyCar series. And currently, we have various components of that operation that are scattered throughout our building. We have the engineering group where they do the trackside engineering. They go to all the races. They're housed in the front of the building. The engine builders are in the center of the building. Management's kind of spread around the building. So, our intention with this expansion is to create a world-class, visually stunning work environment where all the trackside engineers, all the builders, all the management are housed in one consolidated area. And it creates a more impressive value proposition for sponsors, for our partners with Chevrolet, more in line with what you might see in a Formula One shop or a NASCAR Cup Series shop. We want the quality of the engines that we build to match the physical appearance of the built space. So, that's one purpose. Obviously, we're at a square footage. This is going to help accommodate future business growth in other areas. One of the fundamental problems that we have in our business right now is that it's very difficult for us to grow. We're bursting at the seams. We have very, very little additional space to work with. Every now and then, we're approached for additional growth opportunities from prospective customers on the outside, and we have to decline it because we don't have anywhere to put it. So, as we reposition our engine builders, our managers, our engineers into this consolidated area where we can be proud of our racing footprint, we're also going to free up other areas in the building where we can reorganize a little bit and then position ourselves to be able to take on additional work on the outside. Whether that's in the racing industry, we're working on building a technology division with more involvement in electronics and electrification and things like that. And then, potentially also in our marine propulsion business.
The company privately held?
It is privately held. There are shareholders. Roger Pinsky is one of the shareholders. There's another shareholder named Mario Alien who is over in Europe. And there's a handful of them, but it is private.
Beyond your business with the Chevrolet Racing Organization, do you work for, do you do projects for other automotive OEMs? Or are your clients mostly not OEM?
We build all the engines for the NASCAR Truck Series. So, we have a contract with NASCAR. That's a long-term agreement that goes out a number of years. And we deliver engines directly to the race teams. So, that's a pretty significant portion of our business. We also do racing development work. There are a number of other development projects that we're working on currently. The problem that we have is if we win this business, we don't know where to put it, right? So, we have a lot of very promising prospects out there. This is probably the biggest operational hurdle that we have to solve to be able to take on that additional work.
How many employees do you have right now?
We have around 110 onsite here in Plymouth. And then, we have another 40 or 50 down in North Carolina at a marine facility.
You anticipate that the addition will allow you to hire more people? Is that part of the plan?
Yes. I cannot comment specifically on what those positions might be or what the business might be. But at its core, one of our main motivations for doing this is to free up additional space in the building so we can reorganize. And then, as these business opportunities come our way, we can make commitments to these prospective customers because we know we got somewhere to put the business. So, we do anticipate at some point down the road that it will add positions as we take on new work.
And you'll be able to handle any changes in the industry as EVs start to...
Yeah, absolutely. Couple of years ago, we dedicated a specific room in our building for a technology space. And we have some very, very highly skilled electrical engineers that sit in the same room with electronics technicians. And we're doing a lot of development work. We call it kind of like a skunk works. We actually created our own electric outboard motor. It's about a six kilowatt hour, I believe. And we demonstrated that at a boat show in Amsterdam, and it generated a tremendous amount of attention. We're planning on bringing it to the Miami Boat Show, I think. So, we're trying to position ourselves as a leader on the electrification side as well.
And you have no issues with any of the comments that were made in the reports that you've received, the engineering reports or the planning report?
No, we discussed all those in a meeting earlier today.
Okay.
We think they're all relatively minor issues that we can solve.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Are we ready to vote on tentative and final?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant tentative and final site plan approval for the expansion of PC Application 2460, Ilmore Engineering, subject to the items in the planning report, the fire department report, and the engineering report. And that the photometric plan, the revised landscape plan, and the decorative fencing be reviewed by the administrative committee.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd to grant tentative and final site plan approval to application 2460, subject to said comments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your continued investment in the community. And it sounds like an exciting world ahead for all of you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Congratulations on your building business to drive it aside.
Good luck to you.
You know, those questions aren't, don't impact, you know...
We're going to do the elections next.
Yeah.
So, do we start with Chair or do we start with Secretary?
Personally, we do chair.
All right. So, the floor is open to nominate our officers for this current year. That'd be Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary. So, the floor is open to nominations for Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate you, Dennis Sabalski, as the Chairman of the Planning Commission and to show you, tell you my extreme gratitude that you have been our chairman for as long as I've been on this commission. And it is greatly appreciated, all your extra efforts and time in leading us here.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor of electing myself as Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence.
I thought maybe we'd go to 15 ballots.
You did accept that nomination.
Yeah, I did. I did. Now, we'd have to have a caucus after.
Yeah.
But I don't have anything to promise, unlike some of the others. So, now for nominations are open for Vice Chair. And I would like to nominate Kendra Barberina as Vice Chair. She's done an admirable job being Vice Chair for the last year and also serving as Secretary, so.
Second.
Move by, are there any other nominations? Okay, move by myself and supported by Commissioner Boyd to nominate Kendra Barberina as Vice Chair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay, motion carries. And for Secretary, I would like to nominate Gail Greger. I did speak to her a couple of weeks ago, and luckily, fortunately, happily, she has agreed to accept a nomination as Secretary. So, I would place her name in nomination. Is there support?
Support.
Move by myself and supported by Commissioner Boyd to nominate Gail Greger as Secretary. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, master plan maps the review. So, Ms. Howell, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Nani did make several changes to the maps, I think largely just to incorporate the latest GIS parcel data and roadways as they've gone in. The colors have also been adjusted to be a bit more reader-friendly. And any new developments that have come in have also been reflected on this. So, for instance, the Elks, former Elks, the Plymouth Walk redevelopment, that is now shown as multi-family on the existing land use map as it's in development. The same for the Courthouse Grill site that is now shown as multi-family.
So, you need a motion to accept these maps? Is that what?
Yes, unless there's any changes or corrections that you'd like to see.
I'm sorry. Laura, so which map has like the change for Plymouth Walk on it?
The first one for the existing land use along the railroad there. It's shown as the brighter yellow for the multiple-family residential.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I think previously that was commercial and it may have been industrial, actually.
It was industrial, yeah.
It looks, maybe I'm missing it. It looks on mine like it's still industrial.
This yellow, the yellow.
Gotcha. Looking at the wrong side.
Yeah. The other side is still those, like the, what is it, storage?
Oh, yes, yeah, the RV storage, yeah.
Any other comments or questions that anyone might have?
I think it's really well done.
So, are we ready for a motion to accept and approve the maps as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the maps as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Dorshavitz to approve the master plan maps as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, our December monthly report. So, Laura, I had a question on the Verona Park. So, at the last meeting, I had asked Ms. Wolf about, you know, where we were, and she said she was going to review the elevations because I know they're coming out with, you know, a different product. Is that happening? And is that something that would have come back to the commission to at least review the elevations? Or what is that process? I'm a little confused by it.
I'm going to have to check with the building official on the elevations. I haven't seen them myself either. I understand that they wanted to go to a ranch-style product as opposed to having the optional two-story on some of the units. They're still staying within their building envelope. But we'll need to compare what was approved in terms of the building design and building facade materials to what was submitted to the building department. They did resubmit, Verona Park did, on January 9th. So, that was last Monday. They submitted new documents.
Does it have to go back to the Board of Trustees at all?
It depends if it's a substantive change or not. If it's the same materials, the same, you know, envelope, yes. And, you know, same facade details, then I think that's included in the cluster housing option.
Okay.
But if it's something, the facade changes that occurred at Andover Forest, for instance, that I would say is too drastic, and that should have come back to the Planning Commission and the board.
Yeah, I just didn't want to see a repeat of that happening, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Agree.
And then, you know, another question I have, really not anything that has to come before us. But I noted that Canton Township is, I think they've just completed a community survey. They're going to be starting revision of their master plan.
Yes.
I mean, do you know where they are with that? Are they going to send you a copy of this? Do you know anything more about the Canton?
Once they have a draft, they will be required to send us a copy. I believe that the City of Plymouth is just getting ready to start their process as well. So, we could expect, well, they're just starting, so probably this fall, we could expect a copy from the City of Plymouth.
And you'll keep us up?
Of course, yep.
Okay. Any other, any questions on what was submitted here for our monthly report?
I just wanted to note the Planning Commission training, that's on page three.
Yeah.
Let's see, James? I just wanted to note for you that if you might be interested in taking the Michigan State University's Citizen Planner Program, just to get a good idea of what we do here, just a suggestion. Five of us took it, and it was, it's fantastic.
Yeah, I would be interested, actually.
It's really worthwhile.
And I did check with Kurt. Kurt is willing to pay for it.
The township will get you registered and cover the fees and stuff.
You can also take the MTA stuff. I'll talk about that in a minute.
Any other questions on the monthly report? If not, there's a motion to accept a report as submitted?
So, moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to receive and accept the December monthly report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then, the 2022 annual planning report that we will be submitting to the Board of Trustees. Do you have any introductory comments on this?
I'd just like to note, we kept this in the same format. It might, I think this picture of Phoenix Mill is from last year, so we might want to consider changing that, if you're open to that. This contains the required information for the state act that needs to be submitted to the Board of Trustees. We did do a recognition for Commissioner Postel. If you'd like that to be reworded or revised at all, that's on the bottom of page two. I did note on page three, under special land use applications, the date should be corrected from 2021 to 2022. So, I've noted that as a correction. There were at least 16, 17 applications that the Planning Commission reviewed last year, so, and some of those are over multiple meetings, so that was quite a lot of activity. And then, of course, there's the other landscape inspection, sign review, land divisions, administrative reviews that occurred and are noted. And then, on page five, we continue to make some recommendations for the zoning ordinance. The Board of Trustees is, of course, looking at their goals for 2023. And some of these, like the parking article, have made it onto that list, and we hope they're considered. If this report is satisfactory to the commission, if you'd like to see any changes, we're happy to make them. The goal would be to have it on the Board of Trustees' agenda for next week, actually, the 24th, for their consideration, since they're going to be talking about their goals as well. And there will be a report from the Environmental Commission and the Historic District Commission next week. So, it kind of, it's a nice report of all the different boards and commissions.
Anyone have any comments or concerns, additions to the annual report?
Very comprehensive and well done, in my opinion.
Is there a different development that you'd like to be featured as far as a photo?
Maybe for next year, it might be St. John's, once they have their, I don't think their building is quite ready yet, or...
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think we'll see a lot of the things that we had approved in this last year will be, you know, more visible at this time next year than it is right now.
Right.
Whenever you're ready. No additional thoughts? No additional thoughts on this. An approval to, or a motion to approve it and forward to the Board of Trustees?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 2022 annual report of activities by the Planning Commission as submitted and forward it to the Board of Trustees.
Support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve and forward the 2022 annual report to the Board of Trustees. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Commissioner comments? Opportunity for Commissioners to raise any questions, comments, concerns?
Quickly, I was going to mention that the MTA, the Michigan Townships Association, has training, and they have on-demand training across all the subjects, and we just bought the unlimited package, so there's like 90 different topics and different on-demand. They range anywhere from an hour to three days, but there's stuff in zoning and planning, you know. So if there's any, if you're interested in that, we can add you to the list. Just send me an email, and I'll get that done.
Okay.
Is there a link that you can send us?
Yeah, I'll send the link tomorrow.
Send the link so we could look at it.
Look and see what's on it.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff on it.
Good.
I'm definitely interested.
Yeah.
I wanted to report that the Zoning Board of Appeals approved the requests of the developer Plymouth Exchange. You recall there were a few items that required CBA approval. They were all approved.
And just for Jim's benefit, Tim Boyd is our representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so he periodically will give us reports as to what's been going on at that group. Any other comments?
I have a comment, and this being my first meeting and first experience in review of a package being sent for, in anticipation of the meeting, and I have to say, it was very professional. I was very impressed with all the materials. It was very easy to read and review, and so I look forward to more of that to come, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura, I had a question. Do we know what the topics for both of the February Planning Commission meetings are going to be, or is that something that you can discuss right now? Just give us a preview.
Yes, I can. And if you could, please let me know this evening if you can make the, both the regularly scheduled February 15th Planning Commission meeting and the potential special meeting for February 22nd.
What are those days?
They're both Wednesdays for February, because we received yesterday a number of applications, all that met the deadline for the February meeting, four of which are public hearings. And so even if we had an hour for each public hearing, which is going to, likely we'll go over that, that's really not giving appropriate amount of time to the public or the applicants to hear their proposals and consider them.
Are they going to be controversial? Is that why you expect long public hearings? Hmm, I love those.
No, we would prefer to try to separate out into two meetings. We could look at alternative dates if the 22nd is not good for the commission, if that does not work. That's just the following Wednesday. We know that this room will be available and is close enough, just by one week, that hopefully that won't adjust any applicant schedules too much.
I can attend both. Can you disclose what the applications are?
Yep. We have a public hearing for Northville Downs for the PUD eligibility, the option, the PUD option. We have a special land use for Bigby Coffee adjacent to Bank of Ann Arbor on Ann Arbor Road. We have a special land use for auto sales and repair at the former auto shop and car wash. That's across from Independence Village on Northville Road, just south of, I'm 14 there. And we have a special land use for a self-storage and RV storage off of Five Mile Road.
Why is Bigby a special land use?
Since it has a drive-through and is in the DDA district.
I wondered if they were going to ask for a drive-through, since they moved from the auto spa.
You got scooters right across the street.
You did, yes.
On the other side of the street.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Laura, that helps.
Terrible location for coffee.
Thank you, Laura.
The one that's being built there at Chad's.
So your plan is to have the public hearings two on each of the two meeting dates?
The preference would be right now to have Northville Downs at the regularly scheduled February 15th meeting and move the other three public hearings to the 22nd.
That sounds good.
Kendra, I did receive your correspondence that you could attend both meetings, and I have also heard confirmation from John, that he could attend both.
I sent you a note also, that I could do it.
Something happens with your email, and we don't get them. And then why does, why is that in John's email?
No, I'm fine with both things.
Both things, okay, thank you.
And I'll be here for the regular meeting, and I'm pretty sure I can do the extra meeting. I have to move another meeting around a little bit. I should find out tomorrow whether or not that's going to happen, but I'm 90% sure it will.
Okay.
I'll confirm it in email.
Thank you.
There's, which goes what?
So we could adjourn and set a record.
I think our record's 18 minutes.
18?
Yeah. Our record is also 1:35 in the morning at the other end, but that was at the old building.
1:35, wow.
AM.
But did we start our meeting at seven?
We did. We started at seven. That's back when our packets were like this high, they would come in a bag.
Okay, any other comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:37?
So Chair, I move we adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to adjourn at 7:37. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.